Here.
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 Silver, here.
Vining?
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Present. Next item?
The next item is public comment.
So I know there's persons that are here this evening that probably want to have conversation and public comment. Obviously, this is where it's at the agenda. If you prefer, we could do it after the presentation if you want to listen to the presentation, or you can say it now. It's I'm going to give the those that are here the opportunity because I know that we've received a correspondence from one of the residents on Donnelly. So I'm just I shouldn't make assumptions, right? Could you you could be here for the historic district and preservation, but I'm going to I'm going to surmise you're here to have hear about the potential future use of Oak Forest Park.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Would you like to make your comments now or after the presentation?
We're listening to it.
Okay, I don't want to I don't want to stop any conversation. If somebody can't stay, I want to make sure, but this way maybe some additional information might be helpful. So because it's we don't make any decisions at work sessions. At work sessions, we get information and discuss. So I want to thank you all for being here, though, so that you got somebody watches. That's good always to see. I appreciate it. So I'm gonna if it's I don't I'm looking at city attorney. If we need to have make a motion to do that, or can I sit with a conversation that will hold it after the presentation?
I think given this work session, it would be fine to say in your role as chair of the meeting that you'll entertain additional public comment after the presentation.
As the agenda, if you didn't have one, they're up there. If you want a copy of the agenda, you probably have it on your phones. Oak Forest Park is the first discussion, so I'll take the public comment after that, not at the end of the meeting. So but you're welcome to stay to listen to the historic districts and preservation conversation as well. So thank you. So with that, I think I'll go to manager Robinson for our agenda items. I know that the first is a discussion on Oak Forest Park.
Yes, Your Honor and Council. As you know, we've had Oak Forest Park since about 1985. It is part of our our Parks Master Plan. And as we look at different things when we had our our housing study, et cetera, it was designated as a potential place for potential development of housing as well as as other items. I know we have had internal discussions with legal about the the different potential options that we have for the park, but we felt that it's time to bring the conversation to you to see what your guidance is towards us as we start to forge a path to decide what we actually do with with the Oak Forest Park. And if I may, I'd like to invite Assistant City Manager, Economic Development Director Mark Cochran up for the presentation regarding Oak Forest Park.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Clerk Treasurer LaVoy. As the city manager indicated, within our department, we manage all of the the city-owned property, whether that's vacant infill lots or park properties. And so from time to time, conversation is prompted that we request some guidance and direction from city council on how what your direction is and what your vision is on on certain city-owned property. And tonight, we're here to talk about Oak Forest Park. For reference, in case you're unaware, Oak Forest Park is a seven-acre park primarily boundaried by Donnelly, Northridge, and Fredericks Drive. And this piece of property, for some historical reference, in 1985, when the when the Oak Forest Park development and subdivision was developed, seven acres as part of the development agreement with the city between Benchmark Home Centennial Investments and the Oak Forest Partnership, one of the clauses in the development agreement did call out seven acres to be dedicated to the city, and I quote, "for use as a public recreation area." Since that time, it's generally been unmaintained throughout the years. There has been some trails that have been through there through the park, but generally, it's been natural habitat space and natural forest. As city council has made investments across the park system, we always have to look at what are our resources and what do we have the capacity to manage and in what priority? And so part of that, when we look at all of our parks, in the master plan process, the city updates its recreation master plan every five years. And in 2023, the most recent master plan, one of the strategies identified that some city-owned properties may be better served if they are decommissioned. And one of those properties that was identified and recommended for decommissioning was Oak Forest Park. Also, in 2024, when we did our residential housing strategy and took a look at the residential needs and capacity and demand across the city, one of the redevelopment and infill sites that was identified was Oak Forest Park for new development for traditional neighborhood residential that's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So with with these directives and understanding, the Parks and Rec Master Plan called for it to be decommissioned. The residential strategy called for us to take a look at it for possible residential development. It's generated a lot of discussion amongst administration about what is really the the best use of this property going forward. And of course, that's for council to give us that guidance and direction. One of the things that we had looked at with new residential opportunities is really, okay, if that's something we wanted to look at, what could the site possibly hold? And there's a map on the screen tonight. We worked with engineer city engineer Patrick Lewis just to schematically look at how would how would residential fit onto this site? And you'll see there were about 15 different residential parcels that could be built on the site. Part of it did include along the easterly boundary or along Northridge to the north, having some forest and natural space there. But of course, this is only one concept layout. If this were the direction that city council wanted to go in to look at residential, there's many different ways that this site could be laid out if if that's a direction we wanted to go in. Also, understanding, in addition to the road frontage, you'll see the access off Donnelly. If you can see where my you can't see where my mouse is, but to the west, Donnelly Drive would be where the access is, and that could connect all the way straight through to Hendrix in this layout. But of course, if if council wanted to explore this further, there could be a part of the site that could be set aside for a neighborhood park like we've identified in some other development plans as well. So we just wanted to show that just as a demonstration for your reference. But given given the site, given all the investment that we're making across the parks and the resources that we have and the crew that we have to maintain everything, generally three full-time staff in the Parks Department and about six or seven seasonals, we wanted to have a discussion about what is your guidance? What would you like to see done with this property in the future? And so a couple of different options that we're just throwing out on the table for discussion would be one to leave it in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, keep it identified as a park. And then if that is the preferred option, what is the desired level of improvement and maintenance that city council would like to see on that property? Similar to Mill Race Park. So you'll recall Mill Race Park, that's on North Telegraph Road behind Walgreens, just south of the Telegraph Road Bridge. That's a city park. However, it's unmaintained, and we don't do any activity on that site. One thing that we do, of course, on all of our city property, if there is a danger to the neighboring properties, so say there's a dead tree that overhangs and threatens one of the neighboring properties, we know that's our responsibility to take it out and maintain it. However, we don't do any mowing, cutting, or any other clearance on that site, but there is an identified plan in place for the future when resources become available. But right now, the Parks and Rec Master Plan doesn't identify anything for Oak Forest Park. So if we wanted to leave it in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, that would be another conversation to have with city council about what sort of development or what would we like to see there. The other thing that is an option for consideration is to pull it out of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, but reclassify it as surplus vacant city-owned property. And then that would demonstrate city council's prioritized allocation of limited resources. Basically, it's not a park, but it's a vacant city-owned property that's left unmaintained. An example, this is at the corner of Detroit Avenue and East Elm Avenue. It's near the battlefield. That is all city-owned property. However, we don't do any maintenance or do anything on there either, although it's identified for future improvement in the Heritage Corridor Master Plan, but that's city-owned property that's not a designated park. The other option, we could divide up the property into smaller pieces and then convey it to adjacent property owners that would be combined with their residential lot. So if they in this instance, we would dispose of the city-owned property, divide it up, offer it to the adjacent property owners, and we would combine it with their residential lots that would be part of their property and to be maintained as they desire. And then the final option that we're throwing out on the table is to pursue what is recommended in the residential master plan, which is to pursue residential development opportunities on this site. And that would be cause for discussion with city council about what type of format would you like to see on that? Of course, if we went that route, and in the future, if there was an interested residential developer, city council would have to actually approve that conveyance, which would come with your approval of what the future plans for that site would be at that time. And of course, city council, if you've got thoughts, ideas, or discussion that are outside these four options, certainly, I think that's on the table for discussion tonight as well.
Park, I'll see any comments from council members to start? Any thoughts? Council or Andrew, because we're in a work session. Andrew?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know I've been in communication with the former Parks and Recreation Director about this site. We've been looking at it, as has the administration, for several years now. It occasionally has creeped up as a as a point of interest for some residents living in the area. There have been some complaints associated with the property in terms of negligence of maintenance and enforcement of certain actions. And so I'm glad that we're having a discussion, but I'd like to hear what the other council members have to say regarding the property.
Other cops comments to start? You know, I I'll go Michelle?
I know we don't have an answer right now. I would like to know the difference if we offered the property to the residents in place, or if we develop the property, what the difference in the tax base would be?
I see he's taking notes, so I don't think you're going to get an answer.
I wish I could do that off the top of my head, but.
I mean, you know, for maintaining as it is, and obviously, it's city property, it has no tax base. If it's developed in the housing, it would probably have from the one, I'll say, one spectrum to the other, would have the highest tax base. And then in between that, as if there's any type of development at all that becomes taxable, it could be. If it was parsed out and purchased by adjacent property owners, obviously, it has tax base, but it's not necessarily the same as if a new building's there, it becomes property that's added to a existing lots, which I don't have that number. I wouldn't know what that would be either at this point. That's an assessor's role, not us as council. Other questions or comments for Mark? I'll start Deb's and then.
Mark, can you go back to the other map, please?
This one or that one?
Mark, while she's looking at that question that might come to mind is if the decision from council is maybe we explore the the possibility of conveying the properties to some of the current adjacent properties. Is that something where it's it's either everybody's in or everybody's out? Or is it possible they could piecemeal certain aspects of that? And then, you know, potentially, there's you might have three people that want to do that, but then that leaves you like eight, nine other parcels that we would still have to somehow leave as forest. And that would be something that would have to be done, you know, consideration in that factor, correct?
Yeah, I think, you know, you it's a it's a consideration to think about if we begin to parcel off parts of it, and some property owners would like to have the additional property and some would not, then the city could be left with completely undevelopable property that's hard to access. And you run the risk of of that challenge if not everybody would like to to take that opportunity.
And obviously, it's this is just a I always say concepts and renderings, which always change. And even we have plans that come forward of a development, that's the rendering, but then what's what's feasible to do? This is just crafted as probably, as I wrote my note here, from where it is currently, which there is none, so this would probably be the maximum capacity with sizable lots. And of course, this configuration is now aligning to other properties, if that is even a conversation. So you see, there's a lot that would have to be done with this. This was just a again, a concept of understanding what would the capacity possibly be? Kelly, I'm sorry, Debbie, you have a follow up?
No, I'm I think I would need more time to really study all this and be able to really get a focus on it.
And I think that's where we're at, is bringing this forward for a variety of things, from our conversations, from our work sessions, the development opportunities, other opportunities. And I think this is a review for us to understand and for the residents of what and how we got to where we are today, and then where do we go in the future, if anything at all. Kelly?
Mark, could I see it in the 3D again?
That one?
Yeah. And how did you say how many acres this was?
It's seven acres.
Seven?
About seven, yeah.
So it could be a substantial residential development if we find a developer?
Yeah, and you know, there's there's also a lot that goes into if this were to be explored for residential development, it's more than just putting a drive through the site because each of those lots is going to have to have access to water, sewer, utilities, you know, and there there comes a cost with that in terms of feasibility and marketability as well, too. So it certainly doesn't come without challenges.
Yeah, those costs would be on the city? Are those like public utility costs, or would that be on the developer?
You know, most of the time when we have those discussions with the developer, thinking about conveying city property, that's part of negotiation in terms of who's going to put that in? Does it become private infrastructure, public infrastructure? Is it a partnership? So each each circumstance is unique, but all those are options.
Haven't heard from the residents, what they think yet, but I know that housing is a big-ticket item that we're looking at, developing more housing options. Yeah, I was just curious how how big of a space that was. I I think, like everybody else said, we need more time to think about, and I'd also like to hear from the residents that are here.
Kathy?
Yeah, I personally have not been to that area. So could you just describe, is this like a very wooded area? And what kind of current problems are you having? You said there've been some issues. Is there anything more that you could add to current situation?
Yeah, so time to time, anytime we have vacant city property, sometimes vagrants and homelessness, you know, pops up in these circumstances. Whenever it's reported to us, Brad, our Parks Maintenance and Police, go out there and and clear those issues. And it really it also comes down to what is the desired level of maintenance that city council would like to direct resources to? We've heard some residents would like it to be more maintained with accessible trails through it, maintaining the forest floor better when trees fall in the middle of the forest, having them taken down or cleared up. Other neighbors, we've heard from, want it left completely untouched and just have native woods or native forests behind them without a lot of public access or public amenities. So there's conflicting things that we hear from from the neighbors as well.
I want to bring this up first because it's Oak Forest Park. So I'm assuming it was when it became in 1985 was part of the Oak Forest development. And of course, we know we're in had had conversations and some challenges with Oak Forest, but there's not an intention of just to put it on the table, there's not an intention by the city of any possibility of extending that form of housing, correct?
Correct. Yeah, if that's a directive of council.
And we and I'm not going to get into Oak Forest with our conversations, which we know that we've come to some resolution there for what we're looking for of improvements. But it's simply the name of it because it was tied to that development, correct, as you said?
Yeah, can I?
Yeah, please do, if I'm missing something.
So across our park system, sometimes we a lot of times, most of the parks are part of a platted neighborhood or a platted subdivision where it's actually called out in the plat that it's a park and it's part of the the plat itself. In those instances, when there is a park that's part of a platted neighborhood, the city charter prescribes if the city desires to decommission that park that's actually planted, it would take a vote of the electorate to do that. It would have to be on the ballot. This is not one of those parks. So it was not it's not identified, and it's not part of the platted Oak Forest subdivision. The only place it's been identified is in the development agreement itself when this was conveyed to us. We also don't have any record in the city's records of the park actually being commissioned, so to speak, where city council formally commissioned it as a park. So the only two references we have it listed as a park is A, in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and also B, in the development agreement when the developer intended to convey the seven acres to the city for public recreation use.
So also, as I think about this, I'll say forested area because it is it is very dense with trees and then trees that fall and not that we don't this particular item go down and clear and clean up because it's not being used, at least in that that fashion, as you said. You know, one item that I'm aware of, I know that there's there's different each neighbors here might have a whole different each might have a different view what to do. Some may say they want to keep it as it is. Some may say they may support housing if there's buffers. Some also don't. I don't believe there's some residents around the the area that want it to remain as it is currently with with trees and and it's getting, I'll just say, visited for cleanup, when it, of course, that's not an option as well, unless we get into agreements or arrangements with the residents, correct?
Yeah. And part of the discussion we've had recently with one of the neighbors is they would like to maintain the forest. If the city doesn't have the resources or doesn't prioritize the forest maintenance top, would they have the ability to do it, even if it is city-owned property? The challenge we have with that is really liability and having residents using chainsaw, mechanical equipment, other things in the forest. We simply can't have volunteers using that kind of equipment on our city property for we don't we don't do it within other city parks to allow that sort of heavy equipment operation, but.
And so I I bring this up because as we think about this as a council and also the residents is what's the agreeable to all if we if or majority? Because if it's to stay as it is and somebody else wishes to do it otherwise, it's not it's probably going to be challenging for all of us then. So I just bring that up because we have those examples as well. Other questions or comments from Mark? Questions? Oh, Andrew?
The extension of Hendrix, were it to extend as that map proposed, now extends a city street to a street of Frenchtown to meet those two up. And also, that then Hendrix goes out to Telegraph. Currently, all the traffic in that neighborhood directs itself through Fredericks to exit that neighborhood, allowing a Hendrix exit now puts the north half of Scarlet Oak, Donnelly, Hendrix, and Northridge out on Hendrix instead of out on Fredericks. And so I don't know if we're potentially talking about installing another light at Hendrix or what the traffic patterns would be like that either, because that would be pretty close to the Fredericks intersection as it stands now. But you'd be redirecting a fair amount of traffic in that neighborhood through that exit were that to connect. And then that's through a road that we don't necessarily own or maintain.
May Mayor? Yep, that is certainly a point with with this configuration. Certainly, if we wanted to avoid for traffic circulation, not having traffic leave the neighborhood out onto Hendrix, there could be another way to design a residential development. But we do have those circumstances across the city where a city artery or a city road exits out onto a non-city road. I'm thinking when we extended Huber Drive at the Lazy Boy site, that goes out on the Greenfield and Huber at Seward Road where there's no light and we don't have jurisdiction over Huber and or that section of Huber and Greenfield. So there's other instances of that. And certainly, we try to work with our neighboring jurisdictions to look at what the impact of that would be. But yep, I would I would agree. I think that would be a challenge with this with this development, and there could be other ways to design it.
And if there was a development, it could just not be at all. It could be simply not permitted or not opened as a as a road that extends. You know, anytime you have that, there's always two ways to look at it. Some would say, that's great, I can get I don't have to go all the way around. Others will say, I don't want people to come through, so I'd rather go around. And I'm sure we'll hear that as we go through. But other questions or comments? Andrew, do you have follow up? Okay, so Mark, thank you. I don't think there's I think this is the start point. There's obviously many items. You may want to leave that up in case there's questions about it. So I think, as we said at the start of the work session here, at this time, I'll take a public comment. I just want to remind people, when we take public comment, please state your name and your jurisdiction or residence. Like, you can say the street name or just City Monroe is fine, or if you want to leave your address, that's fine, because we want to know who. Because we want to know who, uh, opportunities, if there's a list that we contact in the future. That's one way the clerk keeps the record, but we could also make, I would tell you, this would not move forward in any fashion without notifications. With how we do these type of things, as Mark said, you know, some things are required, some things are not. And we make sure that, uh, this is how we start. That said, so, um, as you come forward, um, I guess mindful of everybody's time here that, uh, and our public comment's usually three minutes, but I want to hear what you have to say. So if we're all reasonable, we'll get through everybody, correct? So, uh, just come forward, name please and jurisdiction or residence or your address if you wish, and comments are welcome. Thank you.
Voted the sacrificial lamb.
You got, oh, you're, you're the only one? Come on.
My name is John Hilkens. I live at, uh, ten twenty Donnelly, which on the other map was plot sixty-six, which is right at the corner of Donnelly and Hendrix. Okay, right there in the corner?
Yeah.
Um, we have lived there for, this will be thirty-two years. We built the house in nineteen ninety-three. We bought the lot in nineteen ninety-two and started, it was a wooded lot. I had to take down thirteen trees. No, they were small trees.
Yeah.
But I had to take down thirteen trees to build my lot and to build the house. The, the woods and we all call it the woods. I don't know what they call it. We call it the woods at our house. Um, and, and it's been great. My kids grew up back there, you know, playing out in the woods and doing whatever. There are a lot of trees down. I will tell you that. The ash borer was no friend. And they're all, most of the trees, I won't say all of them. I believe most of the trees, because I've been back there, most of the trees are the, are the ash trees. The ones that are left are maple and oak. And that's what's back there. From my point of view, I got one of, one of three options. First of all, I'm going to vote no to a six-story condominium being back there. That was a joke. I'm kidding. Uh, ju- just to put this in the context. The back of my house faces these woods. I don't, you can, it faces it. I have no curtains on the east side of my house. I have none. I have valances. I, it's, and it's, it's great. Yet we see the, you know, we see the deer come through there. Um, we, you know, see it snow, it's great. Every season is different. However, I understand the need for something to be done. And I, I would, I guess I would prefer it just stay the way it is. You know, that, that's, that's what I would like. I think if you, you know, I don't can't go back to his map, but that one, if you extend, if you extend Hendrix and have it go back through and around, I believe, and if, this is, this is only my second time coming to city council. The first time was in July or August, and I haven't found my minutes yet, of nineteen ninety-three, when we built the house, I had to apply for a variance because the city attorney, or I don't know who it was, told me I had to put a sidewalk along Hendrix going from Donnelly back to the woods. And, and I said, for what? Because there's nothing back there. And doing some research, I was, I was told, and Mark Worrell was on city council at the time, and God bless him. Um, he was the only city council member, and this was a meeting that met over at the, the old Lazy Boy thing over by Rossler. Um, he was the only one that came and looked at it. And I guess my, my thing for you all is if, if you're going to discuss changing something back there, I want you to go look at it. When, when Mark came out and looked at it and he came to that, that city council meeting and he said, are you kidding me? You want him to spend three thousand dollars? This was nineteen ninety-three, to put a sidewalk from Donnelly back to the dead end? And, you know, and, well, I had pictures and graphs and everything else so that it made it easy for him. But they voted I didn't have to do that. So I, I guess at, at that point, I didn't know if it was going to be a woods forever. I'm not going to live forever. There is no way my kids are going to live in that house. They, they're, you know, live there and gone, you know? So what happens twenty years from now? That's going to be on the next people, but I planned another twenty years there. You know, and I would, I would really like to see it stay the way it is. Now, if, and I was saying, if you go back and look at it, okay? On the north end of that, the top of that orange line, if you're looking at it, is, the grading of it is pretty level right behind my house. When you get to the next lot, I don't know what you're sixty-five or sixty-seven, whatever you guys are, it, it starts going down. And by the time you get over to the south end of that, it's down at least six foot. I haven't been back there with a transit or anything to, to scope it out, but it, 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 it goes down. It, there would be so much fill that would have to go in there. And you can see where the drain goes across there. And there was actually one of the neighbors that's now moved to Florida that dug a ditch to drain that because there was so much water collected back in there. They, they dug a ditch to connect to that drain just to keep the mosquitoes down. And now, so I guess we do what we need to do. I mean, my compadres here, we, we all live next door to each other. If something happens that needs to be taken care of, we take care of it. You know? Anybody live over on Northridge? Oh, I'm sorry. I won't speak ill of the Northridge people then.
They're all neighbors.
Yeah, in one way or another. But it's, it, it's been a, a great place to live. It's a, it was a great place for my kids to grow up. I mean, they used to go back there and build forts. We only had one issue and this was, I believe, the second year we were there. So it was ninety-four, ninety-five, um, where some kids were playing back there and lit a fire. They had a little campfire, you know, but we're, we're talking thirty years ago. And, and the fire department came out and they had to park the truck at the end of the street and drag a hose back there, but it wasn't too far. That's the only problems we've ever had. Other than that?
Well, I, I have you down as a, remain as is.
Okay. So I, I got one more thing.
Sure.
If the fourth option, I think it was, down on your list, was to just parcel it off to the current residents? Would we be apprised of that ahead of time?
That's, as I said, we're just taking information now, but also if all the options will be pursued. If that was the case, we'd have to be obviously contacting the residents.
Okay. Because when there was a Parks and Rec meeting and it was out there in the hallway, I think a couple of, three years ago? There was informational meeting, I, I went to that. And I actually approached somebody there that said, and, and I said, if you're going to do this for my lot, I want the next fifty to seventy-five feet going back and the full length of it, make it a lot, I'll buy it. And they said, well, we can't do that. It's a city park and we can't, you know? I said, okay, but if it ever does, let, let us know.
Yeah, and I think that was part of the discussion because if you have one and, and not the others, how does that then still make the other land use? Does it stay as it is? Those are all the conversations. So John, I appreciate your comments, um, and obviously the clerk has it as a record. You know, one of the items I think that you, uh, mentioned was about, you know, the, the park and the cleanup or the, or the forest. I, that's why I call it, uh, in the cleanup, you know, that, you know, we have a person that will take those calls if there's something that's, uh, that's needed to be done. I can't speak for the rest of the council. Uh, I, I know that some have been there. I've been there, I've been there long ago, had they been there recently? I've been there from the Frenchtown side. Kind of not, I won't say is probably as familiar with it as all of you are, but I think that probably through walking and others might have had, have been there. If not, I agree that, uh, if there's anything that's going to be done, the council members will need to make sure we all visit.
Okay, and, and going back to the Frenchtown issue, from my understanding, and this was thirty-two years ago, when this plot was developed, the people of Frenchtown that live over in there, because those are narrow streets, they did not want Hendrix to go through.
Right.
Because their streets were narrow, they don't have sidewalks, you know, and it was just, they didn't want it. So the negotiation was, okay, we're going to put this woods, the forest, the park, between Frenchtown and the city and call it a park.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Other comments? Yes, your name please and address or jurisdiction, please.
Hi, Kimberly Steve at nine four zero Donnelly Drive. We're right behind it, a couple of doors down from John. Our concerns also are, you know, we are used to that being private. There's animals back there. We aren't used to anyone back there. As John said, again, we have no drapery, nothing on the back because it's just an open forest area. And when we bought there twenty-seven years ago, I believe, um, we were told in our understanding and I believe our, um, deeding showed that that was a undeveloped property wooded area. And that was one of the main reasons that we bought back there because it's very quiet. You know, we have our three streets, Scarlet Oak, us on Donnelly and Northridge. And the traffic goes out to Frederick's. It's very quiet. We do not get, you know, all this other traffic through there because there's no reason. It's only our few streets. Where again, if that was opened up, we're going to have traffic coming and going from Telegraph Road. We don't want any of that back there. You know, we, that isn't what we agreed to or signed up for. We bought back there because of that. The other thing is, is I'm not sure, is that property actually Frenchtown?
No, it's in the city.
It's city. Okay, all right. I wasn't sure. Um, but I just know that when we bought back there, we were told and our paperwork showed that there was to be absolutely no development back in there. And of course, you know, in opening anything like that up, you know, is going to bring. The other thing is, is if you're looking at developing, what kind of development are you talking about putting in there? Rental properties? The homes on the other side are lovely homes. I'm talking Eaton and is it Hendrix and that, that are accessed off of Telegraph? They're lovely homes, but it's a much more modest neighborhood than the area that, you know, that we're in. And so then does it affect, you know, property values? Everybody keeps things up along the woods there. We all, I mean, none of us even have fences. We're wide open across the back there, all of us neighbors. You know, so we really, really are opposed to anything like this being done. Um, and we enjoy the peace and the quiet that is back there. You know, it's, it's tucked back in there, but just around the corner, you've got the city conveniences. So again, myself and my husband, we're totally opposed to anything changing back there.
Other comments?
It's me.
I'll do it.
Name please?
You can do it too. I'm Desiree Snyder. I'm at ten ten Donnelly Drive. Brad knows me very well. I'm, because if there's something I don't like, I call. We have been there since ninety-one. We bought from Perry Gray when he was developing. We are one of the first ones to be back there. If you don't know where it is, behind Sonic, the old Humane Society that uses this way to tell you. And yes, it's really quiet. We also don't have drapes. The sun comes up, we could see the sunrise. It's gorgeous through the trees. Like Kim said, it's super quiet. We get the animals. We've had probably the first twenty-five years, we never had an animal till they started building on the other side. And when they started tearing down property, we get deer. We had foxes one year. We've had raccoons. I think the second year that we were there, there was a homeless people living in the neighborhood in the back that we had to get someone kicked out. Otherwise, we don't have, we don't have crime in our neighborhood. We have nobody back there because it's, it's quiet.
With all those things, you're, it, you're, it's about development. You don't have an interest in developing, correct?
I don't want to see a thing done. I don't want to see a park. You can go down the street and go to Manor. You know, and I, I do know the people on the other side who have had a lot of issues with trees falling. Their house is also pushed right back and they're, they're into the woods where we're away from the woods. I do have a fence though, um, only because I have an in-ground pool and my fence is all open because I did not want to block the woods. I bought there to be in the woods. We had to remove trees when we put the pool in, but I want to be able to look out my windows and see the trees. I can now see the houses on the other side because so many trees have fallen from when we were first moved in. But other than that, I'm on the, I don't want to see any, I'd like to see the roads fixed in our neighborhood because they're bad. But, um, other than that, no, I want to keep it the way it is.
Okay, thank you. I guess we have another comment?
I'll be brief. Bob Snyder, ten ten Donnelly, um, Desiree's husband. Yes, I'm opposed. Leave it alone. Period. It's been that way for so many years. There's got to be other places that the city can look for potential revenue. Not to tell you all your job, but, uh, the infrastructure cost alone. Good Lord, millions to put roads and sewers, electrical for fifteen houses? I don't know what the payback would be, but I would think it would be marginal, but what do I know? In conclusion, just leave it alone. I, I don't, uh, I, I just don't see any reason to, uh, mess with it. In this group right here, we have three out of the six homes that I believe are along that stretch on Donnelly. So at least half of us have now voiced, leave it alone.
Okay, hold on. I have a comment to make at the end. Go ahead.
Anyway, um, so as far as the option four for consensus? Well, you have fifty percent that say we're interested, so please act accordingly and plan accordingly if that is a eventual solution or option. Thank you.
Oh, another comment? Yes, your name please?
Hi, my name is Connie Highmore, sixteen zero five Northridge Drive. Um, this has been our home for thirty-three years. And the sales features was that its view was a park. And it was a sales pitch and a reason we bought our home. We are, um, when Oak Forest subdivision development began in nineteen eighty-five, the developer agreed to dedicate seven acres of the property for, for use as public residential or recreational area. You list in your packet minimal development and maintenance. You list a minor walking trail. There's never been a walking trail in Oak Forest Park. If it is, it's from the kids tromping around back there, uh, from the neighborhood. Most of all, the maintenance is due to residents calling concerning dangerous trees that have fallen. At this present moment, the woods is impassable due to many large trees uprooted and laying on the ground. The township residents off of Telegraph Road are dumping concrete and landscape materials into the woods. A fire actually spread from one of the residents into the woods. So cleaning it up a little bit might help with fire mitigation if we ever had an emergency. I know all the homes on Donnelly were affected with all of the smoke and no one knew how to access or get into the woods to stop the fire. It wasn't a big fire, but it could have been. It was a very windy day. We see growth happening in our community and throughout Michigan. This park is in the middle of a city, a growing community. Green space is important and valuable to all of us. We ask that the city please leave the park as it is. Clean up so it's aesthetically pleasing to the residents that live back there. And let it remain Oak Forest Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us comment.
Seems there's other comments? Okay, sir? Okay, sir.
Hi, my name is Don Scoble. I'm at 1629 North Ridge Drive. That's the corner of North Ridge and Donnelly. So my property does not back up to this park. But when I sit on the deck in the back of my house, I'm looking right at it. And it occurs to me that when they built Oak Forest, they knocked down a bunch of oak trees. Everything's been planted with maples and stuff like that. So if nothing else, this is the last stand of oak trees in Oak Forest. And it should be preserved for that reason. So I'd like to see no changes. Thank you.
Again. See if there's any other comments before we move on. Before I do, oh, there's another comment.
I'm Paul Steve, 940 Donnelly. My wife talked earlier. I'm opposed to any changes being made. We bought back there because of the remoteness of the location. A lot of people don't even know that it exists back there. And we just enjoy the nature. We enjoy the trees. It's just a very relaxing area. My wife has a lot of health issues, so we're out on the deck in the back when it's warm every day. And it's very relaxing for her and myself. And we do not want any changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment from one other neighbor.
Nope, you can't. Now, you can't speak for the neighbors, but I will say that Clerk Lavoie, I received, Councilman Felder and I received an email from a resident. So that comment will be placed in the file with the rest of them. It may be the same one, but if they're welcome, if they weren't, they can forward that along, it'd be wonderful.
Sure.
Yeah, all right. Any final comments from council? Anything further? Andrew?
I will say, that's the neighborhood I grew up in. My parents have been in that house since 92 or 93. I wasn't one of the mangy kids who started the fire, but I did play back there with Charlie and Jamie and Brad and Logan. So yeah, we've been back there. It's a very aesthetic area. So I can understand absolutely why you guys want to preserve it.
I guess I'll say, you know, that's why we have work sessions. That's why we have received comments is to hear what residents think about this. We also, as a council, think about, I think it was mentioned about development in other places. I can tell you there's probably a half dozen or a dozen other locations that we're considering within the city. We're having very same conversations about housing and other development or not development. So these things are not just one neighborhood. I will say that listening to the residents, there's information, I think, that whether you may like this or not, recognizes there's maybe some deficiencies. And when you hear there's a fire, but you can't access it. So what do we have to do to make sure we can do that? Because the last thing we want to have is a fire that expands from there through into the residential area. So maybe there's items that we should be doing or could be doing. But if it's a park, as I think as Mark said, it's currently a forest. And I think that's what I hear to be the preference. But there's also, you know, trees are going to fall. But if they're going to be dangerous to the homes now, we would hope that we'd get a phone call to be able to address that. If it's going to have maintenance in the park, it has to be done by the city staff. The residents can't go out there and start clearing trees down because it benefits their property line because they want more space. That's not going to work either. So I think hearing what you have to say, it provides some information of, for us as we continue to have conversation, but also recognizing there may be things that we should be doing or could be doing. And if we, if you leave it just as it is, then it will stay as it is and then things will fall and stay in there. But address the hazards. But at the same time, there's got to be some way to access it possibly. And I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm just saying those are the conversations I think that will come to council as staff takes their notes and we look at what options are. Believe me, this is not the only location in the city that we're looking, how we have to maintain some taxable value with the changes that we're, I think we all know that we're facing here and changes in the next five to 10 years. But with that is there are large parcels, much larger than this, that we're also considering about housing as well. And I think the mention was what type of housing? We look for all type of housing that's needed and people are looking for. I don't like the word affordable. I call it attainable because everybody has attainable. I know there's a house that I live in, it's old and someday my wife and I are going to say, we're not going up the stairs no more. But there's somebody that does and we're going to look for that ranch or like that less maintenance home. So we have to have that variety as we look forward. And I think that's what the council had at our work session here a month or so ago about what are, you know, the goals and objectives and what the housing came out to be the priority. So that's how these things rise through conversation. And please don't take that concept as something that gee, that's what's going to happen. I mean, that's from minimal to maximum or as is. So that's kind of where we're at. And I know that, appreciate your information and addresses. I know that if we move forward with the council of some next step, we will make sure that we reach out. And I know that Mr. Cochran has his business cards there. Might be the best way for you to maybe also reach out if you see there's a need. And I know that as Mark, as well as the staff, if there's, and how they respond to that. That'd be wonderful, thank you. Clerk has her cards as well. If there's others that want to make contact to her, that she could insert into the public comment, so, all right? Thank you all for coming this evening, appreciate it. And I hope it's been informational, but not only for us, but also for yourselves as well. So you're welcome to stay to listen to the Historic Districts and Preservation discussion. But if not, I'm going to go right to the manager. We have enough time before our 7:30 meeting. Manager Robinson, the next item, please.
Yes, Your Honor, we have kind of a presentation that'll be somewhat educational for some of the newer council members. But it is on historic preservation, as we do have a unique situation in our city about historic preservation here. And I think that the presentation will be interesting. And we're just looking for some guidance from council on how we go forward in dealing with some of the historic preservation, our policies, et cetera, and how we handle certain things.
Thank you. And thank you again for coming. And as I say, you're welcome to stay. Mark?
All right. Thank you again. So we've got another topic for discussion this evening. This one has to do with historic preservation rehabilitation in the city. And it's been quite some time since we've engaged city council in a discussion about this topic, but also some proposed policies that we want to run past you and gather your feedback. So we know Monroe is an old community. Monroe is Michigan's third oldest community. And it's the character of our buildings, our properties, our historic landmarks and monuments that lend quite a bit to the character and charm of our community. And I think it's something that we all appreciate. Of course, every day we strike a balance between historic preservation and modernity. And so how we strike a balance between those two is one of the discussions that we're going to have tonight. But first, hoping to get some feedback. When it comes to rehabilitating historic properties, what is your perception about that? Certainly, we hear a lot in the community. But in terms of prioritizing historic preservation rehabilitation of our historic properties, what is your perception of that?
I'll look to the council first because I'll give you my, either perceptions or the reality of having a house built in 1983. So Kelly?
My perception is that there's a lot of red tape because you have to go through like the Department of Interior or the state, that there's different levels of historic places because maybe in 1983, they added a loft or something. So now it's not available going on the national register, that there's a lot of levels. My perception is also that some of our current zoning codes, although I know you've been working really hard on them, you and others, to bring them up to today's modern times, is still really heavily based on our old historic neighborhoods. And so those are some of my perceptions, if that answered.
Other comments, thoughts? Reaching for the mic.
My perception is we have beautiful homes in the city of Monroe. However, I think some people do not have the means to keep them up historically to the integrity that they need to be. And that's a problem. And it's not their fault because it's very expensive for materials. And in order to maintain that integrity of the home, it's costly. That's just my comment.
Comments? Saw I had something because I have an old home. So I think first off, you have to say whether it's historic, I'll say place or house, or is it a historic designation? And I think there's a difference. And the difference is historic designations may have to meet some of those or many of those codes and some other items. My old home, which is a historic old home, is not a designation. I did not, it wasn't done before I moved there and I self has not done that. We still have to have things reviewed by the Historic District Commission because it's how we maintain the strength of our historic homes. And it doesn't mean that it has to be the same materials that were produced 100 plus years ago. And then you have some latitude to find, I think there's been some adjustments that you can get like materials that look like what was there and still maintain the historic feature, that designation, appearance. And I think they're actually more, or less costly than it would have been in the past. I think that's the changes that have occurred. And I think we have, well, you're going to get into that, so I'll stop. Because what is a historic district, right? Maybe that's the next question. I'll wait and save my answer. That's kind of my view of it. And if you've done your project at a historic home, be prepared to do it a second time. And know that if you're in for the long haul, that you always have something in a project to do. We as a council have to appreciate that when people do come and want to maintain their historic homes. As Kelly said, is how do we, how do we get them there? How do we get it to where they can, you know, not lose their historic home, but at the same time develop in a fashion that doesn't lose its appearance in those type of items? I think it can be, there's a way to get there. I'll stop.
And this is very important to hear your feedback because certainly if this is council's perception about rehabilitating historic properties, more than likely, it's the public's perception too. So hearing what your thoughts are is important as we go through this presentation. But yes, and you know, we always say, just because something's old, doesn't mean it's historic too. There's got to be some historic value to it in order to earn that prestigious label. But there are different levels too. And we're going to kind of go through that tonight. And I'll say, it can be a little complicated. So stop me if you have questions as we go through this. But in the city of Monroe, we have nationally designated historic districts and we have locally designated historic districts. And we treat them each very differently in terms of what the review process is. So in the city, we have three districts that are on the National Register of Historic Places. One, and here's the map for you. But one is the East Elm, North McComb Street Historic District. One is the Old Village Historic District. And the other one is the St. Mary's Church Complex, which is all the properties associated with St. Mary's Church. They're all on this map, which I know on your screen is about micro. I have copies of the map to give you upstairs. I forgot to bring them down. But any property that is highlighted in one of these districts is on the National Register of Historic Places. Next, we have a local historic district ordinance that city council adopted. And there are 36 individual properties that are designated by city council as locally, local historic districts. This is very unique across the state of Michigan. And Monroe has a very unique place with the state Historic Preservation Office in that we designate individual properties. Other communities designate districts, much like what you just saw federally. And we treat these properties that city council has placed historical significance on a little bit different in the review process. So we have national districts which contain many properties. And we have local districts that are individual properties. On top of that, we have seven national historic sites that have been designated by the federal government and the National Park Service. They're not federally owned properties, they're owned by the city. However, they're designated as national historic sites and those are listed here. So how, when a property owner comes to us, how do we treat them when they have a project that they're proposing to do on their property? First, there's a document called the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. That is a document that is maintained by the National Park Service that provides the best practices for the treatment and rehabilitation of historic properties. Next is our zoning code. Chapter four is the Historic Overlay District. This was adopted by city council. And this talks about the review process for those federal districts. So the larger districts that have multiple properties have to follow chapter four of our zoning code. And I'll talk a little bit about that. And then chapter 383 of our code is the Historic District Ordinance. And those 36 individual properties have to follow the requirements of the city ordinance. So in our property maintenance database, we have all these properties flagged so that we know if one of these addresses come in, we know, does it go? How does it get treated at the Historic District Commission? And so I'm not going to read these to you, but the PowerPoint's going to be given to you in case you are so interested. There are 10 standards that are put out by the federal government when you treat historic properties. I put them all on the slide and I'm just going to flip through them. You can read them later. I figured you didn't want the whole 200-page document and I gave you the Cliff's Notes. But when a property comes in, we review that and what the proposed project is. Similar to what the mayor was saying, if somebody wants to put a new deck on their house, what are the standards with that? If somebody wants to replace their windows, what are the standards with that? If a house in a national historic district is replacing the siding on the house, how do we treat that? What do we review and what is recommended? So that gets to the next question. What is recommended versus what is required? Councilwoman Bynan, you mentioned the red tape. I think that's a big perception about historic properties. There are so many reviews I have to go through. There's a lot of paperwork I have to do to meet this requirement. And oddly enough, that's not the case. We've tried to streamline it as best as possible. So when we get a building permit for a historic property, the building department reviews that and sends it to the Historic District Commission for their review. What happens at that point determines the next step. So if it's one of these 36 properties that are locally designated, the Historic District Commission is required for any work that will affect the exterior appearance of that house, the HDC has to review and issue a certificate of appropriateness or approve the proposed project before a building permit can be issued. That's a big difference there. So the HDC and Jeff Green, who the city still contracts to provide historic preservation consulting services, for any of these 36 properties, they look at the Secretary of Interior Standards and say, are they being followed? Because that is what the city requires. And if it's not, then we're not allowed to issue the building permit. If they do meet the requirements, then the HDC gives its approval and the building permit gets issued. Now, there's many different ways. In an instance which really prompted this discussion with council is if somebody is replacing the siding on the house. There was, I'll give you the example, the specific house. It's at the corner of East Third and Washington Street. It was a pink house, if that rings a bell with anybody. They wanted, the paint was peeling, they wanted to update the siding. And so we sent it to the HDC to review. The Secretary of Interior Standards do not recommend removing the original wood siding. They recommend painting it. However, we had a discussion with the property owner and said, if you want to put up vinyl siding on this house and cover up the wood, you're preserving the original historic feature of the house, but still achieving and putting up, as the mayor indicated, a different material. And so that's what we did. They put a new vinyl siding on the house and it looks great. That's an example. It's not always, no, you can't do this. What we try and do is, no, that's not the recommendation. But here are some other things that either may be more cost-effective or may actually be cheaper than what you think it may be. Replacing windows, sometimes window repair is thought of as very expensive. And it's cheaper just to replace it with, you know, a manufactured window. That's not always the case. Sometimes repairing windows can be a whole lot cheaper. They're just as energy efficient. They're just as energy efficient, and they can last a long time. And so we consult with them and provide that, that sort of technical assistance throughout this process. To your point, Councilwoman Vining about it being a little daunting and a lot of red tape. Typically now too, with the HDC review, we get an answer in two weeks. So we're trying not to hold up the work because we know time is of the essence. So the takeaway from this is these 36 properties, the Historic District Commission is required to approve before a building permit. Next, in chapter four of the city's zoning code, is all of the properties that are on the National Register District, so those multi-property districts. In these cases, there's this little chart that talks about five different activities that require the HDC review. One is a new construction within any of those historic districts of either a single-family addition or accessory buildings, non-single-family principal buildings as well. Fences, signs, and decorative lighting do not require the HDC to review it. Exterior renovations only in the central business district. So if you're on the National Register listing and you're downtown, your exterior renovations are required to be reviewed by the HDC. If you're outside of downtown but listed on the National Register, it does not have to go to the HDC. And then any demolition of any property in a historic district has to go before the HDC for review. So the difference here is the HDC only makes a recommendation. It is not required to be followed, and the building permit can be, issue a building permit even if the homeowner selects not to follow the HDC's recommendation. So they're not required to approve it.
Your honor, I have a question if we can.
Sure, Andrew.
So for the historic designations and then for the city's own districts, how does a property get on the list? Does it need to request? The city would never arbitrarily put a property on the list.
So that's the 36 properties that are locally designated historic districts. That was done by the city.
Okay.
Not by the property owner.
Okay.
We haven't done that a long time, by the way.
Yeah. So at this point, not that we would do that to a, to a property owner at this point, so anyone who's moving into those properties is sort of understanding what they're getting themselves into?
That's going to come up in the presentations. One of the challenges is a lot of people don't know they bought a historic house. They think they bought an old house.
Yeah.
But they don't know it's historic, and we've got a recommendation on how to deal with that in the presentation.
Gotcha. And then the second question would be for the National Registry, when we're talking about districts instead of buildings. How do the requirements differ if you're in a district that's a nationally, like the old historic village, whatever it is?
The old village plat.
The old village plat as opposed to that individual building. I would imagine that the people who own specific buildings probably are more cognizant of that than someone who lives in this broader historic district, and that the requirements for that may differ as well.
The federal guidelines are only recommendations. So the federal government can't come in and say, hey, why did you replace the windows rather than repair them? So once you're on the district, really, there's, there's not like an audit where the National Park Service comes in and says, wow, you've really changed this district. We're going to yank the approval.
They don't have the capacity to do that anyway.
So this is the difference where for federally, for national historic districts, everything is a recommendation.
Gotcha. So the national requirements are less, the national recommendations are less stringent than if the city, if you're on the city's list, and the city can designate you on that list without you applying for it.
Could be, yeah.
Thank you.
So this is our residential housing strategy where we talk about the benefit that these historic properties play in our city. A lot of times, they increase the taxable value of a property. It encourages homeownership. It provides stability in the neighborhood. They lend a lot of benefit to our community rather than detriment. And so I just included some sections from the residential strategy that highlight. But this is why I asked the perception question. So when we get questions about the historic preservations, we say they're a blessing and a curse because the blessing is they have a lot of character. I put a thought bubble on here. They sure don't build them like they used to anymore. They're unique. However, they have extraordinary character and craftsmanship, but they do have the reputation or perception of being a lot more expensive to upkeep and maintain. There's a perception that repair is always more expensive than replacement. One thing we do run into is for historic work, it does, it is a specialized skill set. So window repair is a lot, can be a lot harder to find than calling up wallside windows or renewal by Anderson, who will come out the next week and get the work done in some, in some cases. So you got to work a little harder to find an appropriate contractor. But Councilman Felder, to your point, new buyers may be unaware of what they've purchased because right now it doesn't come up in title search that you're listed on the National Register. It doesn't come up unless you're looking that you are a locally designated historic district. So sometimes property owners don't know what they're getting into in terms of what are the standards when, when the time comes, I want to do a project. The next question is, so we've talked about historic properties are great. They look good. They add character. So when we have a property owner who owns one of these historic properties, how do we balance trying to follow and preserve these sites without mandatory compliance? So how do we have a carrot and a stick here? How do we work with the property owners to try and encourage them to follow the Secretary's standards without requiring it? Any thoughts?
Thoughts? Kelly?
You could make it fun like a contest or something. I just get the biggest thrill out of going through the old village plat. When I pick my granddaughter up from the middle school, looking at the different colors that they use. I even stop and talk to the residents and tell them how great their houses look. That castle one right there, I call it the castle.
The Boyd House. Yeah.
And then east, east of there, there's beautiful, I think they're historic, I don't know, but they look it because of the color schemes and, but I think to recognize those homeowners who go through all that special care in some way or make it a contest because people like competition, that could be one way. We could do the home tour. I wish that would come back. Things like that could be helpful.
Should we require it? So should we change that from a recommendation to a requirement that you follow the Secretary's interior standards? And if we do, how, how should we work with the property owners?
What do the people on the Historic Commission think about that question?
We'll get there. Yeah. We asked them.
Okay.
Kathy?
I don't know how we can require anything without doing a lot of education. So it sounds like we're really in an educational deficit at the moment. We've got to figure out how to get that word out first.
Did you see my presentation already?
No.
I guess you'll continue. I have comments, but I'll reserve.
Okay. So in the residential strategy, there were four recommendations in dealing with historic districts. One was to reactivate the Historic District Commission as an advocacy group and a technical resource for property owners. So educating the property owners and kind of dispelling some of these myths and helping them see it as not such a daunting task to keep these historic properties up. The second recommendation was to file with the Register of Deeds a notice of designation of the historic district property for the 43, or the, should be 36, locally designated historic properties. So that when someone buys a house, it comes up in their title search, and they're then made aware at the purchase that they're part of the, that they have a historic house. Second, or the third recommendation was to convene neighborhood meetings in areas with a high concentration of historic properties to discuss inclusion as a cohesive district. So that's having conversation with the neighborhood. Partly, too, the recommendation is to change it from all these single-site 36 district or 36 locally designated to put them all into one district rather than individual. And then the third is really implementing that. Reestablish local historic districts. To your point, Councilman Felder, put more properties within the historic district by city initiation. Distribute a pamphlet that explains the procedures and outlines the tax incentives for either homeowners or owners of rental properties. So we wanted to discuss a few of these recommendations to see how much of a priority are they to City Council, and which ones do you really favor as, you know, things that we could begin to look at immediately?
Well, if I may, to clarify my position, I don't know that if I was clarifying the process, I don't know that I was advocating for us utilizing that to forcibly put on more properties to the, to the city's district. But I, I have a good understanding of the process now, per your explanation. Thank you.
Good.
You know, preparation for this evening, that was one of the ideas. So we, you know, some council members have been here longer than others. There's new things. And as we made some adjustments here, where you talk about the, from this strategy and five-year plan, those are things that, you know, kind of get passed as we get them presented. And this is the opportunity for council to get a foundation of understanding as we move forward with what we might be doing here. I will say that I, you know, was familiar with the, all the individuals because they couldn't get consensus at one time, and this goes way decades past. And so the city moved forward and let individual homes become historic district designation. Sound good at the time. Now it's, it's a challenge to manage that. It's to Andrew's point about, well, why don't we, you know, should they be, do we go to a high concentration? It's probably been, I think maybe Kelly may have been here, but it was a time when, you know, there was a group that wanted us to make these area designations in the community. And we said, that sounds admirable. And we challenged them to go out and get the support, kind of what it says here in the neighborhood meetings, and couldn't push it over the line. Couldn't get petitions that had in a geographic area of consistency. There's a lot of reasons for that. Some are home owned, some are not. Some have this thought of, well, I'll never be able to maintain my house, which is not the case. But, but there is, there is a process to it. There was no question that is not just understood. So that kind of fell to the wayside as far as doing that. So when I look at that one about, you know, get a higher, you know, designate properties to include space, that'll take a lot of effort and work. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it comes in time of who may be living within that particular district. I made, in one of the geographic areas, but I probably went through the process of knowing when I had permits pulled, I knew the HDC was going to review it. I knew the customer would come and visit, and they'd ask, and they'd ask what we're going to do. And, you know, and the like materials to make it still look historic as it, as best can be, as well as, you know, other, other things that can be done. So, Mark?
You know, when, when we looked at these as a department and really wanted this to be a discussion among council, but some of the thoughts that we've had, there are challenges that come with expanding the local districts. A, again, it would then require that HDC approval rather than recommendations. So in, in our effort and working with City Council to make development more efficient and friendly, we looked at expanding the properties that get reviewed for a recommendation versus a requirement. And a lot of these local historic districts are already included within the National Register Districts. So they don't lose their clout as historic properties. But, so we viewed it as more an approach to work with property owners and incentivize and encourage following recommendations rather than applying more requirements and process with them. And so a couple of these that really struck us as, as good priorities that we could take forward is using the HDC as a technical resource and doing more education with the community and getting more information out there specifically to those property owners. And then also filing that with the Register of Deeds, that notice, that's something really easy, that everybody then is aware when they buy a property, what the significance of their property is.
I guess I'll add something is if, there's a way to establish a, you can't say use this contractor or use this person, but those that were, where work's been done and who that person, construction company, whoever it may have been, did the work, it has a place to go look. And you know the story. It took me two years to get my house painted plus because it wasn't just painting the, most of it's brick, wasn't painting the wood. It was the work that needed to be done because I needed a carpenter. And I couldn't find a carpenter to come out and do a small job. But I found a company that had a carpenter on staff that was able to do the work, then to be able to get all the painting done, but also other repairs. So it's, it's, it took a while. And you can't just settle and say, I'll get this part done and work the other because it just takes it, it was beneficial, I'll just say that. So if you have that as a resource, then people can then make their side decision whether they want to use this person or the next, or go out and find their own. It is a challenge. We all, I think we all know that, and finding that, some of that skills to do some of the detailed historic work. And I'm not talking about the materials. I'm just talking about getting it to look as close as possible as it is, and I think it does, and yet getting it painted to make sure it lasts for a longer, longer time. So a list would be something that, a possibility. And we could get those even from nearby communities, whether it's through the SEMCOG, MML, that, you know, there may be resources there.
And we run into this as a city. We own the Sawyer House. So of course, you have approved a lot of projects at the Sawyer House over the past two years, and it's the same thing. We try and find contractors to do that work. So we understand in our department what homeowners are going through because in a sense, we're a homeowner of the Sawyer House and go through it. And so I know we're running on time, but one of the other recommendations that we wanted to chat with council, in the zoning code right now, I highlighted again, only exterior renovations in downtown are required to be reviewed by the HDC for a recommendation. Rather than expand these locally designated historic districts and require every single one of those houses to be approved by the HDC, we would propose expanding exterior renovations in any historic district, in any zoning code, not just the downtown, to be reviewed by the HDC for a recommendation. And so wanted to bring that. It does add a step. The zoning code right now does allow us to, you know, refer things to the HDC even if it's not required. But the benefit of that is that technical assistance that's provided as part of that work. So if somebody is proposing to, to remove the wood siding, in that case, we didn't have a leg to stand on to tell them no, but we encourage them, cover it up rather than go through the extra step of removal. So we are looking at making this a new requirement in the zoning code update that if you're listed on the National Register in that larger districts, which encompasses the local as well, it would be reviewed for a recommendation and the building permit could be issued. How does council feel about that?
It's what I did. Can be done. And I think it, you know, you think about it, and you're waiting two years, and yet, you know, for this process to go in surely isn't going to inhibit that timeframe. So it's, I don't think it's a big lift then.
So our recommendation with those three items, to file something with the Register of Deeds, to provide more education, technical assistance, and expand the review requirement for a recommendation, is the three recommendations we would have to City Council in making some policy adjustments when it comes to historic reviews, but also thinking about the benefits and explaining the benefits to folks. If you have a historic property, you qualify for federal historic preservation tax credits. The state also opened up for residential, it used to just be commercial properties. Residential owner-occupied homes are now also eligible for state historic tax credits as well. And that's the benefit and some of the, the assistance we can provide with what the application process looks like to make it less daunting and overwhelming for somebody. But we asked a question earlier about how we encourage people to follow the recommendations without having to say you have to follow the recommendations. One of the things we wanted to talk about is if people are going after the historic preservation tax credits, or right now we are updating the neighborhood enterprise zones, and several historic districts fall within the neighborhood enterprise zones, if somebody is applying for that tax abatement as a carrot rather than a stick, could we condition approval or support of these abatements or incentives that you would follow the recommendations?
I see some nods, yes.
Seems appropriate.
So we're asking you to follow these recommendations, but we're also giving you resources to, to get there and to do it. But all of our support and technical assistance would be conditioned upon following them.
But if you...
Go ahead, Andrew.
I'm just going to play devil's advocate for a minute. If my neighbor has a, a regular, run-of-the-mill home, is in the NEZ. If my neighbor has a, a regular run-of-the-mill home, is in the NEZ, he applies for the NEZ tax credit, puts a new porch on his house, he gets the abatement. I apply for one, I have a historic home, I put the same porch on my house, oh, actually, we need you to follow these recommendations, there's additional steps, same program, same eligibility in the NEZ zone, but mine, my application is conditional, my neighbor's is not.
And that's part of the responsibility that comes with owning a historic home. And part of that is the discussion with council tonight. How much is it a priority that we want to preserve and rehab these appropriately with the standards? And, you know, part of that is the technical assistance in terms of, most people think I'm not allowed to do this, the requirements are strict, they're really not as strict as some people think they are. So it is very much a case-by-case basis in terms of what, what the improvement is, what they're applying for, that they're seeking assistance for.
Oh, Kelly.
And these conditions are only if you plan to remain on this list.
So you don't come off the list and the city council takes action to amend the historic district ordinance and remove properties, but once you're on the national register of historic places, you're, you don't get to say I want out.
Yeah. It's a one-way transaction there.
If you're not able, for whatever reason, let's say financial reasons, you're not able to meet the condition, you still, this is still a historic.
And that's why they're recommendations at the federal level and not requirements, because, I mean, and this is one time where the federal government recognizes local issues vary across the country. And cost is a consideration sometimes in historic rehabilitation. If it's financially unfeasible, what's the closest we get to get there?
A quick comment. I like the, the idea of the register of deeds, but I would like to see if there is something that we can also provide, not just say to the potential homeowner, oh, guess what, you're buying a historical home, but let's add some, a flyer or a downloaded pamphlet or something that they could then understand it, or that they could scare people.
Carol in my office has been putting together a pamphlet that is the FAQ, here's where you go, here's how you help, in one way that we can get that out, outside of just the transaction at the register of deeds. Anytime a property, you're a realtor, anytime a property transfers in the city, you have to file a property transfer affidavit with the assessor's office. So when we get those, that's something that we could then hand out to somebody who turns that in at the city with a lot more information, rather than, hey, you're on the historic district.
Before they buy the home, they would have an information.
They could, yeah. When, before they buy the home, that's when it would come up in the title search, that you're buying a historic property. The information that comes, technical assistance from us would come when we find out that somebody actually bought the house, or contact us.
So, if you saw the comments, if you got your support and, uh, focus the work session.
Basically, your work session, I have a chance, and that's on each, yeah, this is all, we'll start with the, uh, lead, and then the, uh, the, uh, this. So.
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 If it pulled, it'd be pulled and then brought under the council action at the end of that session section. I'll ask again, any items on the consent agenda that was present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Councilman Felder?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Steelgrave, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carry out, resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under Presentations, Communications, and Public Hearings, Item 5180, Delinquent Demolition Invoice, Public Hearing. There are no comments on file in the clerk's office, and in front of council this evening, you had a packet of any of the lists that were updated after the agenda was published due to payments. So that's what you have in front of you, and they should be in order of the public hearings this evening.
Thank you, I appreciate the updates because as we look at those from the last meeting till now, there's those that are, have been reconciled before this evening, so we get the new agenda item. Manager Robinson, if there's nothing further, I'll start with the public hearing.
There's nothing further.
Okay, so for those who hear this evening that may wish to make public comment during the public hearing, just, there are four separate public hearings, and so if there's a particular topic or item that might be related to an invoice, and I'll just go through the four, and then I'll call the public hearings individually. The first one is regarding demolition invoices, the second was, is regarding grass and weed invoices, the third one is reference rental inspection invoices, and the last is blight invoices. So at this time, I'll start with the first one, and I'll open the public hearing regarding delinquent demolition invoices. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding this public hearing? Any comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and this items are, later, the resolutions regarding council action comes at the end after these, and so the next public hearing, I'll open the public hearing regarding delinquent grass and weed invoices.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I just may, it's also sometimes referred to as mowing, just for clarification, and there are no file, no comments on file in the clerk's office.
I should ask that on the demolition as well?
There weren't.
You're correct, thank you for the clarification, because when you look at the printout, it says mowing, they just, shorter, but it's about cutting, cutting down for grass weeds and mowing. Any public, yes, please come forward if there's a comment, come forward, state your name and jurisdiction of residence and your comment, please.
Okay, my name is Courtney Anderson, I live at 65 West Fifth Road, Street, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure this invoice was actually taken care of, I did speak with the department that's over this, the leading in grass, I have the invoice number if that helps.
Okay, so you just want to make sure that?
I just want, because they said it was closed last year, and then it wasn't, and then it was again, so I just want to make sure this is rectified.
We have, on the list we receive, it's invoice customer, which is the property identification number, and then the owners go by last name.
Anderson.
Anderson?
Mm-hmm.
I know the clerk is looking through, I will as well.
Do you have the parcel number with you?
Yeah.
This paper? Or? So this says, this says 1900025, so it's 1900025, thank you. It appears that it has been removed, Your Honor.
I don't see it on the list that we have.
Okay.
Double check, like I said, it was removed last year, and then I got this letter in the mail.
Invoice then, still.
I'm sorry.
On notice?
Yeah, I got this hearing notice.
If you could, just, I know you already saw the clerk, maybe start there, so Clerk Lavoy can look at that, and we're just, we're going to make sure that we verify that, why you got it, and then also that we don't, you don't get it again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for being here.
You can bring it over to me.
You just, you know.
This was printed at 4:00 this afternoon, so my guess is if she's had a conversation, it has been removed, and that's why we can't find it.
That's why we don't see it, so it has been.
I'm just going to take a picture.
We'll move forward to see if there's others here regarding a, the delinquent grass weeds mowing, any other delinquent invoices, comments in the public hearing? None, I'll close the public hearing, wait a second here.
All right, Your Honor.
Okay, I'm going to make sure that the clerk is ready before we move on to the next item.
Um, yes, so the next one is item 5178, delinquent, delinquent rental invoices, it is the public hearing, and there are no comments on file in the clerk's office.
Thank you, that's how I should have started the last one, and I didn't, so thank you, Michelle. Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing on item 5178, delinquent rental invoice, public hearing, any comments regarding rental invoices? Okay, I see none, I'll close the public hearing, Clerk, next item, please.
All right, the next item is item 5177, and that is delinquent blight invoices, the public hearing, and there are no comments on file in the clerk treasurer's office.
Thank you, at this time, I'll open the public hearing on item 5177, delinquent blight invoice, public hearing, any comments from those present here this evening regarding blight invoices? Very well, close the public hearing, and anyone more, please? Next item, please.
The next item is under council action, it's item 5181, budget ordinance fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, up for its first reading.
Thank you, Manager Robinson, comments going into the council action?
Yes, Your Honor, you have before you the, the budget ordinance in its, in its first form for the first, for the first reading, along with information that included an executive summary that, that came from the, the finance office through my office to you, and we are, kind of goes into detail in the summary of our budget, and we're prepared to, to present that for first reading tonight, and we do have Assistant City Manager, Finance Director Sells in our, in our audience to answer any questions you might have this evening.
Very well, any questions or comments from Administration, Manager, from council regarding this evening, I know this evening we're going to be placed on the floor, and that we have a follow-up at the next meeting with the public hearing, second reading, and adoption, but if there's any questions or comments from council at this time, if you haven't already made some comments before this evening, call in the manager, any comments this evening from council? I see none, so this is an extra item for, to set those other meetings, Councilwoman Germaine?
I make a motion, move that ordinance number 25-001, the budget ordinance be placed on the floor for its first reading, and that the public hearing, second reading, and adoption be scheduled for April 21, 2025.
Motion by Councilwoman Germaine, supported by Councilwoman Hader, on item 5181, the budget ordinance fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
All right, now I'll go ahead and present it for its first reading.
Please do.
Ordinance 25-001, Budget Appropriation Act, July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026, an ordinance to approve the budget for the city of Monroe for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026.
Thank you, I'll just make a comment just before we get to the next item, those that are present here are those that may be watching, if you have an interest in some of the budget items, you can find that within the clerk's office, also within the packet that was put online today for this meeting, or last week was put out for this meeting, and if there's questions, you can obviously reach out to the administration or council member, or at the next meeting, thank you. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 5170, Resolution Spreading the Expenses of Demolition on the 2025 Summer Tax Roll.
Thank you, Manager Robinson, any further comments on these next items on the resolutions?
There is no further comments from the administration regarding the resolutions regarding the public hearing topics that you had tonight.
If there's any, or if there's council comments, if not, motion be in order. Councilman Hader?
Your Honor, I make a motion to move to accept the proposed resolution from the clerk treasurer, authorizing the city assessor to spread the special assessment role for the expenses of demolition fees on the 2025 summer tax roll, and recommending that the resolution be adopted and the charges be placed on the summer 25 tax roll.
Motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Stringham, on item 5170, Resolution Spreading the Expenses of Demolition on the 2025 Summer Tax Roll. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader? Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Next item, please.
The next item is 5183, Resolution Spreading the Expenses of Weed and Grass Cutting on the 2025 Summer Tax Roll.
Thank you, Manager Robinson, again, any comments?
On this resolution as well.
Thank you, any comments from council regarding item 5183, if not, a motion, Councilwoman Stringham?
Your Honor, I make a motion, move to accept the proposed resolution from the clerk treasurer, authorizing the city assessor to spread the special assessment role for the expenses of weed and grass cutting fees on the 2025 summer tax roll, and recommending that the resolution be adopted and the charges be placed on the summer tax, 2025 tax roll.
Motion by Councilwoman Stringham, supported by Councilman Felder, on item 5183, Resolution Spreading the Expenses of the Weed and Grass Cutting on the 2025 Summer Tax Roll. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader? Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is item 5182, Resolution Spreading the Expenses of Rental Housing Inspection Fee on the 2025 Summer Tax Roll.
Manager Robinson, again, anything on this one?
The administration has no further comment on this.
If not, there's council comments, if not, a motion is in order. Councilman Hader?
Hey, Your Honor, I make a motion to move to accept the proposed resolution from the clerk treasurer, assessor to spread the special assessment role, the expenses of the rental housing inspection fees on the 2025 summer tax roll, and recommending that the resolution be adopted and the charges be placed on the summer 25, 2025 tax roll.
Motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Steelgrave, on item 5182, the resolution spreading the expense of rental housing inspection fee on the 2025 summer tax roll. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
25 Summer Tax Roll.
Again, Your Honor, no comments from the administration on the resolution.
Very good, and with that, any comments, if not, a motion, I see Councilwoman Germaine?
I will make the motion, move to accept the proposed resolution from the clerk treasurer, authorizing the city assessor to spread the special assessment role for the expenses of blight removal fees on the 2025 summer tax roll, and recommending that the resolution be adopted and the charges be placed on the summer 2025 tax roll.
Motion by Councilwoman Germaine, supported by Councilwoman Stringham, for item 5171, Resolution Spreading the Expenses in Blight Removal on 2025 Summer Tax Roll. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader? Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item?
I have no further items this evening.
So next is council comments, before we get to Councilwoman Germaine, who is first, because it is April, those, it seems tedious, what we just went through, but the importance is, is we make sure, I get in smiles, we do every year, but there was a time when we would have this place with many people here, but I think through the process of making sure we sent out notifications, people still have the ability to come in and say, I don't recall getting this, or I think I already paid it, we've had one here this evening, right? So for some reason, that's why we go through all these, the action, and then the council requires, because the resolution requires us to go to each one, and I repeat it because I want to make sure it's known why we do the business this way, so it seems tedious, but it's, if you want to hear it again, a year from now in April, you come back and you can hear all these yet again, this is the time of year when we do that, so I appreciate the work, though, done through the clerk's office, the staff, in putting together and sending these out, because it's, I'll say, it's, the results are much better now, because things are handled upfront for those that are willing and able to, to make resolution on these invoices, so that's just my comment to start. Councilwoman Germaine?
Thank you, Your Honor, first and foremost, we went to the Everyday Heroes Dinner last Wednesday night, and I want to congratulate Deb and Steelgrave and Tino Amayo for their wonderful award, and all the heroes that got awards at night, but especially Deb and Tino, well deserved, and also, this, this weekend is Earth Day, and the college is having an electric hybrid demonstration in the college parking lot, and then next to that, from 11:00 to 2:00, in the, what is it, Education Building, here, I forget, they'll be having all kinds of kids programs, and the Commission on the Environment will be having a table there, it'll be a lot of fun, that's from 11:00 to 2:00, there'll be food trucks, and it's all free, thank you.
Very good, Councilwoman Stringham?
I'll just add to the Everyday Heroes, that was a great event, supporting United Way, and it was very, I think it was great to see as many city that supported it, so keep that in mind for next year, they were always looking for nominations, and you start looking at just the people, everyday people out there, and how they're making a huge difference, it is wonderful, so if you've come across that during the year, put in a nomination and, and help the person that you've witnessed do something extraordinary, help them get some recognition.
Councilman Felder?
No comments this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Hader?
Thank you, Your Honor, just two things, the first, I also want to congratulate all the Everyday Heroes that were awarded last week, including Deb, and want to invite anybody that needs some assistance, the Monroe-Lenway AFL-CIO will be hosting a mobile food pantry this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. at the Mall of Monroe, so if you need some assistance, or you know somebody that does, please have them come out, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Steelgrave?
I just want to wish everybody a happy and blessed Easter, we won't be, be here till after that, so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining?
No comments this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, I just have a couple of comments, first, the event coming up, that the National Park, the River Rays National Battlefield Park Fine Arts Gala is on April 19th, it's at 5:00 p.m., it can be found on their website, both through the, the foundation, the Battlefield Foundation Board, if there's an interest, it's always a fine event, and there's much art, our local artists are the one that provide the arts there, and some of those, they keep in, I'll say, store for future use, but some are also available if people wish to make purchases with the artists in agreement. So when we had earlier this evening, we have the consent agenda, and I talked about that, there's many items on there, there's two that I want to make comment to, because it's, it's about appointments, there was appointments, I want to thank Belinda Webb for, for her now wanting to serve, and, and the council approving the recommendation to serve on the Housing Commission, and the other, the, is, the employees who serve on the retirement system, Board of Trustees, the Pension Board, Michael Merka from, Merkel from the police, and then Mark Pavilak from Teamsters, so it's their participation on the boards and commissions, I was going to say it earlier, I'm going to say it now, because we had a work session before this, and one of the items on there was about historic facilities and preservation, if you weren't able to watch it, you can watch it on a re, replay, so to speak, but when we talk about boards and commissions, if you have a passion for historic buildings and want to learn more, watch the program, or the, the presentation, I should say, that was there, and we have two vacancies on the Historic District Commission, I'm always recruiting, so if you have a, a passion for that, and you want to see how that there's more flexibility than maybe is possible, but how to be a part of that and be able, and, and serve in that fashion, it's a, one of our boards and commission that meets quarterly, so it's not a, every month, it's not, and they, and they are looking to some of the things, I think, that Kelly, our Councilwoman Vining, mentioned about, it'd be nice to see the historic home tours come back, that's something they kind of champion, and some of those activities that we're looking at to, to bring that back to life as well, because I think it's informative and educational, so after I said that, I wonder, the right, it was on the consent agenda tonight, and we had done this program last year, and it, this year, with the council, and that motion approved the, authorized the 2025 Free Building Permit Incentive Program, last year, we had it over a, a period of a time of about a week, and so if you pulled your permit in that time, and got the work done in a period of time, then you didn't have to pay the permit fee, so it was, and I know that building, and I don't remember the number, but I'm going to say, I ain't going to say, I'm guessing then, there was numerous that, that took advantage of that, got their work done, and didn't have to pay the permit, so we are, what was passed this evening, we have the Free Permit Week, it's actually two weeks, and in that, it's the, the, the building, the permit fees from the period of May 18th through the 31st is the first window, and we're going to do one in the fall, because it was received well, we just decided to do that this year, the administration, I appreciate that, August 3rd through August 16th, so if you have a project you're thinking about doing, and you think about permits, please come down, go to the building department and say, you know, I, I have this work I want to have done, if you can get it done in the timeframe, and they'll talk more about the program, but there's, it's available, so let's see, and this is, the program was received well, and last year, a total of 267,500 total construction value properties were done at that window because of that opportunity, so again, May 18th through the 31st, and August 3rd through the 16th, if you don't remember it later, you just come down and see the building department, or you can get it online at the city's website, that's my comments for this evening. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy?
I too would like to congratulate all the heroes from the Everyday Heroes, and all who were nominated, I also want to thank the volunteers, as a United Way board member, I know the amount of time and effort that goes into that event, and they try to make it as special as they can for everyone, so, and that's a great example of partnership, the United Way didn't start that event, the Red Cross did, here in Monroe, and when they went through some restructuring, the United Way, with Laura Pippes, was able to scoop that event up and, and have it continue, and here we are, all these years later, so it's just another oper, it's just another example of how in Monroe, we, we help each other out, and we, we work together to preserve things that, that matter, so just thank you to everyone who has a hand in that, in the Everyday Heroes, or just any other situation that, that comes up in the city, so that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Manager Robinson, comments this evening?
Just to further on your comment about the, the permit-free weeks that we have there, there will be additional information coming out in, in our city newsletters, as well as on our city website and social media platforms, for anybody who wants to look further through that. Secondly, I would like to thank the, the city clerk for her excellent job in putting together the things that had to go to, for preparing all the information that was necessary to get things ready for the 2025 tax roll on delinquent invoices and all of those areas, I know that's a lot of work, and I'd also like to thank the Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, for putting together a very solid budget format, and for us having a balanced budget going forward, and please, as you look through the packet and the budget that you have, until the second reading, I, any of the council members that would like to reach out to me with questions, or need conversation, or clarification on anything, please do so, and we can get you any answers to any of those things, before we get to the second reading and the adoption of that on April 21st, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Sells, thank you, we have the finest finance officer in the state of Michigan, and prepares these and makes it so it's understandable, and if you want to go see it, I think you'll agree, so with that, citizens' comments, so at this time, we'll take public comments, if you have comments, just be mindful of the, kind of the rules of the chamber, please state your name, your jurisdiction of residence, you can say your address as you want, or just say City of Monroe, or township this, and mindful of three minutes, I see somebody already leaning up, so, thank you, sir, all right, name, please?
Omar Ferdinand, 411 West Third Street, Monroe, Michigan, city resident, first of all, I want to thank you guys for, for your time and everything you guys do, I'm here for two matters, first is, I want to invite all the city council members and anybody in, out in the community to come out to the Orchard Food Co-op, some of you guys may have heard about it, some of you guys have heard the rumors, what we're doing, it's a beautiful thing, I personally have had interactions and, with everybody here, and I know all you guys love the community, and you guys are very community-oriented, the Orchard Food Co-op is a community-based grocery store, we have some wonderful partnerships, we have some wonderful things going on down there, we just took over our, our lease April 1st, we're waiting to get approval from the city, from you guys, come on, give us our occupancy so we can open up, soon as that happens, we're ready to rock and roll, we have some great things, I would love for you guys to come down and talk to us, please come see, come, come see what's going on down there, the whole world, and especially you guys, Andrew, Michelle, Michelle, Kelly, Debbie, you guys are all, Mike, you guys are all great, please come down there, see what's going on, Orchard Food Co-op, and I want to thank you guys in advance for letting us open up, so that's my first topic, the second one, Mr. Mayor, I'm here because I submitted a letter last week, formally asking for some information, I have not received any response back, I know that at the, when you asked the last time, city manager, he did let you know that he reached out to the building department, I have not received any formal response, so here I am, there was a couple of things that were stated in there, and I would like to address, first off, my answers were never given to me, first question with this letter was an explanation of the factors influencing permit fees and rates in the city of Monroe, second, I asked for a review of the current fee structure, thirdly, I asked for transparency regarding the allocation of the permit fees, the statement was said that I feel that the permit fees are high, the numbers are not a feeling, a roof repair costs $1,500, in, in Frenchtown Township, it is 65 bucks, in Monroe Township, it is $75, in the city of Monroe, it is $177, I do know in 2018, you stated, the, the city manager stated that in 2018, we were 110% below, that's fine, that does indicate that we do need to get, bring our rates up, but now, with our surrounding cities, we went from 110% below to almost 300% above, when you look at a home repair, so those were minor ones, that's a $1,500, we're only talking a $100 difference there, but now, when we start talking about a full roof repair, that might cost somebody $28,000, Frenchtown Township, 468, Monroe Township, 243, city of Monroe, $699, that is not a feeling, those numbers are higher, I understand that we are comparable with other cities around, there was a statement that was said, what, what was it, the funding differences from Monroe versus, say, Frenchtown Township is because we have a higher city, we have a bigger city, so we're comparable more to Westland or wherever, my question is, where did that number come from, where is that factor, how does that get, did somebody just pull $700 out of their air, out of the air, or did they say, based on this factor, and this factor, and this factor is why we're at $700, and we're not at 243, that is my question, I wanted to know how that happened, so I haven't received those answers, so I would hopefully be able to receive those answers, what funding is different, but, so I know you can't give me those answers right now, but I want to be on the record that I would like the answers for my three questions, an explanation of the factors influencing permit fees, a review of current fee structures, and transparency regarding the allocation of those fees, if we're paying $700, why, what is that being used for, and if we're raising $700, I would actually like to know, how much does the city generate in permit fees, and what is that being used for, and if it's to plant trees and say kumbaya, everybody hugs, that's great, I just want to know what it's being used for, what you guys do with it, I'm sure you guys, I'm not implying anything wrong, or anything like that, I just would like to know the information, so that's it about that, but back to the positive stuff, Orchard Food Co-op is going great, I would love for you guys to come down, we want to plant a community garden, we'll do a bunch of community things, it is not, belongs to no one, any, no one person, it is community-owned, the community members buy in, operate, and run it, the employees there are stakeholders, the people volunteering, the board are all stakeholders, and we would love for you guys to be stakeholders, to come down there and volunteer, or even just come hang out, so thank you guys for your time.
All right, Omar, thank you, and I know that, Manager Robinson, just make sure you, you have your number and email, but just, just.
Correct, I will wait for a response.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. It is community owned, the community members buy in, operate and run it. The employees there are stakeholders, the people volunteering, the board are all stakeholders, and we would love for you guys to be stakeholders, to come down there and volunteer, or even just come hang out. So thank you guys for your time.
All right, Omar, thank you, and I know that Manager Robinson, just make sure you, you have your number and email, but just, just.
Correct, I, I will wait for a response.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, appreciate your time.
Make sure they have your number, okay?
Yes, it's in the letter.
All right, thanks. Other comments from those present here this evening? Other public comments? Yes, sir?
Elliot James, six thirty-three Stone Street. My new comment is the woods behind all the houses on the east side. You know, you had Hawaii fires, California fires, the fires down in North Carolina, or wherever they were. Now, I'm saying that the, the east side is built up almost the way like what you're sitting in, and with trees and bushes high as the houses. And if any of that catch on fire, that even that, there's some people that living back there in those bushes. If there's a little fire catch up, a junk garage butts up to those bushes. There's no chance for nobody on the east end to get out if the wind is blowing the right way. Is there any possible way that the city can cut down some of those bushes, or at least give us a buffer area?
Well, thank you for the comment. I see the manager is always writing it down and about taking notes, so I think the first thing he'll probably do is, you know, look at the properties and have staff, you know, visit, take a look, and then, you said you're looking for a buffer to reduce fire hazard and, and to make sure that there's space there, if there was a tent of some type of a natural disaster issue fire, right?
And a good buffer would be a bike trail.
I knew you'd get that in there somewhere tonight, so.